Welcome to our meeting. The date is March 25, 2025. The time is 7:00 PM. This is an open meeting of the Grand Island City Council. The city of Grand Island abides by the Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is displayed in the back of this room as required by state law. The city council may vote to go into closed session on any agenda item as allowed by state law. I ask that you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city clerk will now perform roll call.
Council President Sheard.
Present.
Councilmember Stelk.
Present.
Councilmember Conley.
Present.
Councilmember Nickerson.
Present.
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Hossi.
Present.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Present.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Present.
Councilmember Pollock will be absent. Councilmember Lanfair.
Present.
And Mayor Steele.
Present.
Also present are Jill Grenier, the city clerk, Laura McAlune, the city administrator, Patrick Brown, the Assistant City Administrator and Chief Financial Officer, Carrie Fisk, the city attorney, Keith Kurtz, the Public Works Director, and Matthew Gleason, the Finance Director. Individuals who have appropriate items for city council consideration should complete the Request for Future Agenda Items Form located at the Information Booth. If the issue can be handled administratively without council action, notification will be provided. If the item is scheduled for a meeting or study session, notification of the date will be given. I understand from earlier conversations that Consent Agenda Items 6R and 6T are being polled by council members for additional discussion. Are there, council members, are there any other consent agenda items that you wish to have polled? Hearing none, we will continue. A sign-up sheet was available in the lobby for individuals wishing to provide input on any of tonight's agenda items. If you did not sign up to speak on an agenda item, please come forward, state your name, and the agenda topic on which you will be speaking. No one has come forward, so let's continue. Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, Item 6A through W, with the exception of items R and T? Mr. Sheard.
Thank you. I move that we accept the Consent Agenda with Items 6A through W with the exceptions of R and T?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Stelk? Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
We will now take up 6R, Approving 911 Quality Review and Training Software. Mr. Rosenland, good evening.
Good evening. Just a brief explanation. The GovWorks Comms Coach software tool is a program that will allow us to utilize artificial intelligence, an AI software system, to monitor the calls, the recordings that are on our phone and radio recorder. The AI will listen to the recordings, match them up with the calls in our CAD, and then provide automatic call review and quality assurance review of those incidents according to a set of pre-established metrics and minimum standards that we would have in that system. What that system would allow us to do is, right now, our senior dispatchers do the quality review. They'll listen to a call, listen to the radios, grade that call. It takes, you know, 15 to 20 minutes, depending on the length of the phone call and the complexity of what's going on with that system, to do just one call review. We'd like to, industry standard for Abco Nina is to do about 3% of all calls reviewed. Weekend average between 1 and 1/2 and 2 every year. We just don't have the staff to get that. What the software tool would do is, it could review all the calls, every single call that we take. Or we can focus on a certain types of calls, a certain ratio of medical calls or a higher ratio of new dispatcher calls. The second really great part of this tool is that using the AI, we can use it as a coaching tool prior during their training. So, for instance, we can create a scenario in the system, a home invasion at a certain address that's in Grand Island or in Hall County, and put in a certain number of facts that we want to have occur in that call, and then, for instance, set the age of the caller, gender and age of the caller to a 10-year-old female. Then, the AI system will generate a conversation with the dispatcher. The dispatcher will ask questions and the AI will answer in the mode of a nine-year-old girl, retelling the details of this home invasion. And it allows us the opportunity to really create fairly realistic scenarios, an unlimited number thereof, for a dispatcher in their training system. So, this Comms Coach tool, I think, is a really valuable software opportunity for us to not only do call reviews after the fact, but really coach a new dispatcher in ways that we've never been able to do before.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenland. And Mr. O'Neil, you came up as a speaker. Are you wishing to make a motion?
I had a question on this as well. If we could do that prior.
Let's see if there's a motion. Mr. Lanfair?
I move we approve 6R.
Thank you, Mr. Nickerson.
I second the motion.
And your questions, Mr. O'Neil?
As far as the call data on the AI platform, will that be, will that data remain internal or will that be shared externally with this other entity?
Yeah, all of the data stays internally with us. Our vendor doesn't get to touch that data. The nice thing is, we own the recording and the recordings and the recorder, so it all stays in-house. We own the CAD software and the servers, and that also stays in-house.
Okay, so it's all stored locally?
Yeah, it's all stored locally, and it can push out statistical reports on a regular basis to both the dispatchers and their supervisors for review.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Nickerson?
Seems like a fascinating tool for you to use, and I'm just impressed with the different facets of it, as you've explained tonight. We talk about AI a lot, and there's a lot of fear about where it could go. This is an example of some good use of AI. And I think it's just a great way to do exactly what you're talking about, being able to evaluate the conversations, see how they went. And then the training tool is huge. Just that total number of simulations you could have will allow you, I think, to screen people who are really cut out for this kind of a job and who may not be a good fit for it, maybe in a faster way than you could otherwise. I'm assuming that. I don't know what exposure you've had to this personally, as far as what you saw or what you've heard, but were you able to see any examples or hearing examples of the critique that it does? Or what are you looking for when you're evaluating a call, really? Overall, what are you really trying to critique and critique?
That's a good point. The software has a system of kind of industry standard, like standards of what you would want to ask, the questions that you would want a dispatcher to ask in all these different scenarios. We can also tailor those. So if we want to add additional requirements, polish requirements, certain questions that we always want to make sure are asked for certain natures or certain locations, we can do that. The other thing we can do is, let's say, for instance, one of the questions we want to make sure people ask is the callback name and the name of the caller. However, let's say, often we'll get a lift assist at a care center. The individual's under nurse's and a doctor's care. They simply need assistance in lifting the patient out of bed. In those cases, we don't always need necessarily to have the name of the nurse, and we already know the callback number. And so often, we're not going to ask those questions because it just takes extra time for information that is either unnecessary or already known. That allows us, so most lift assists, we would require that. But we can say during a lift assist at this address or this address, you can omit that question. And so, just like with everything with AI, it's not going to be a perfect solution, but it'll give us a really great foundation of review. And then it will also call out certain calls for special recognition of a job well done. And it'll also notify seniors and administrative staff of a call that the AI felt like really didn't go very well. And it'll also draw that call to our attention for a review. So it allows us not to wait for someone to call with a concern. The AI, listening to everything, will notify of us. If the AI had a concern, then we can kind of investigate and see if it was justified.
It sounds like a great tool.
I'm looking forward to it.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I was really impressed with that the other day when he was talking about it in the 911 meeting. And the review, the man-hours that'll save you is just, it pays for the software itself.
Yeah, it really will.
It'd be a total savings of manpower there, but...
Yeah, we're excited. I mean, just, I mean, today it takes hours and hours and hours just to get 1% to 2%. And if we could do 50% of all the calls, that's an amazing amount of call review and data.
And feedback's how you get better, you know?
That's true. And, you know, feedback is a gift to be given and received as such. And we see this as an opportunity to receive and provide that gift of review over and over again.
I think it's worth its weight in gold, that software.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Consent Agenda Item 6T, Approving Transfer of Funds to Jack Rabbit Run Golf Course Operating Account. Mr. Brown, please present.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Tonight before you is a transfer of $100,000 to the operating account for Jack Rabbit Run. December 8, 2020, we entered into a contract with Landscapes Unlimited to manage our Jack Rabbit Golf Course. And so, we are running to the end of that contract, but they have requested for this upcoming fiscal year, $100,000 transfer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I move we approve 2025-106.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil?
I second.
Mr. Hossi, questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Pat, for presenting this. I have a couple of questions, though. So, I was on the council rep when we, five years ago, or four and a half years ago, when we decided to go with Landscapes. And part of the reason, you know, we had a contract employee, Don Cruz, who was managing the golf course prior to that, and he retired in October of 2020. And so, the idea of this five-year contract, which, as you said, is coming up to an end. So the interesting parts for me, and my questions along this line, are the downtime where the lack of revenue is really the November, March kind of timeframe. You know, it's really when there's not a lot of golfers out there and the revenue is not coming in. We're at a point now that golf leagues start in two weeks. We're somewhat near there. We're at the time that all of a sudden, all the league money should be coming in. We shouldn't be at a revenue deficit looking forward, you know? And so, historically, can you tell me how many times in the last, since this contract came in place, have we transferred money? The initial funding was, I think, $100,000?
It was.
And then, how many times since that have we put money into this operating account?
So in 2022, we put in $85,000. 2024, we put in $100,000. And this would be another $100,000.
So, when I read about their financials, they had a positive earnings last year. I'll call it EBITDA, but most people won't understand what that is. But they had positive earnings last year. We just put in $100,000 last year. We're at the point that they're going to have positive revenue, as always, because of the seasonality of golf. They're going to have positive revenue. I'm not sure why we need to put in $100,000. I don't know if that's the right number. Is there any provision, or have we gotten any of the money ever back? Or, you know, from the first $100,000 to the $85,000 to the second $100,000?
No, we never received any back, no.
Okay, so, they've been operating the golf course now for four years and four months, and they got eight months left on the contract. And it seems to me, now's not the right, the normal time to be asking for money. So, as we move forward, we haven't ever gotten any money back. Is there any provision for us to get any money back if we decide to do something different with the golf course?
So yes, excuse me. So the operating account is both in their name and our name? And so, once all the bills are paid and if there's leftover money, that would come back to the city.
Have you looked at that? And you agree that there needs to be this $100,000 influx of money at this point in time?
You know, I did look at it, and I did email with representatives of Landscape. You know, I need a little bit more information. They initially provided three-month projection. I asked for a year. And so, with their projections, you know, I didn't really have cause to question their estimates, so...
You know, part of the irony is that when we first started negotiating or looking as to how do we want to move forward five years ago, and being on the committee, what we had put in the contract was, we really wanted to get the annual operating down. And actually, we put a provision in there, if we got the operating down to a $50,000 year loss, which I thought was generous at the time, that we could terminate the contract early if we wanted to. Now we're putting in $100,000 last year, another $100,000 this year. And the whole idea of the contract, you know, the point of having them do this is that they were trying to be at a break even. We're not trying to make any money on a golf course. We're trying to break even. And now that we've had the last two years of the contract with $100,000 inputs, when we should be lowering the amount of money necessary. And from my read of the financials, the financials were positive on a cash flow basis, you know? And so, that's why I would just kind of, it doesn't make any sense to me. And I'm supportive of the golf course, but I'm also here for taxpayers, and that's where my concern is.
And I think you'll have, I think council will have more of this conversation comes budget year, because as you're aware, the lease with the airport ends in April of '26. Contract's up with Landscapes here in '25. Council needs to have that conversation. Do they want to continue the model that is currently in place? So, you know, we don't have the answer for, I know the rent's going up. We're kind of in negotiation right now. So, yeah, it's a council discussion, quite honestly.
Yeah, so I mean, what's happened in the five years that I see is we, five years ago, I'd have said we had $600,000 and some thousand dollars in revenue and $600,000 and some thousand dollars in expense. And now we've got $1 million in revenue and $1 million in expense. And over the past five years, we've paid in management fees to Landscapes $400,000, maybe more, I don't know, $400,000 or more. I'm just, I'm looking forward to those conversations, but it seems to me that we've grossed up the revenue, we've grossed up the expenses, and we're no better off. We're still dumping $100,000 a year in taxpayer money into it to make it run, and I...
You're actually dumping more than that. Because this is capital improvement.
Yeah.
You know, and they've been sizable during this contract period.
You know, and during Don's 35-year career, 45, whatever the number was, most of the cash influx from the city had, were because of capital projects. I mean, the sprinkler system broke, or because of major capital things. The golf course, historically, has covered their own operating costs most of the time. You know, and we haven't, and the major hits were always something major broke. You know, and so we needed funding for something major. And we haven't really done major things out there. I know that I've asked, you know, a number of times, you know, can we pave the, you know, the parking lot? It's something that might be a little, considered a little more major. I really am skeptical of the $100,000, but I mean, I'm willing to look forward to those discussions as we look forward, so, thank you, Pat.
Absolutely.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
We'll now take up our public hearings. 7A, Public Hearing Request from Damian's Convenience LLC, Doing Business as Damian's Convenience LLC, 2105 West Second Street, for a Class D Liquor License. Mrs. Grenier?
An application for a Class D liquor license was filed with the Liquor Control Commission and received by the city on February 20, 2025. A notice to general public of date, time, and place of hearing was published on March 15, 2025. A notice to the applicant of date, time, and place of hearing was mailed on February 20, 2025, along with Chapter 4 City Code Alcoholic Beverages. Departmental reports were received as required by City Code, and recommendation is to approve upon final inspection. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Mr. O'Neil?
I move that we approve 2025-110.
And Mr. Lanfair?
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
7B, Public Hearing Request from Rodeo West Lounge, 811 West Fourth Street, for a Class C Liquor License. Mrs. Grenier?
An application for a Class C liquor license was filed with the Liquor Control Commission and received by the city on February 27, 2025. A notice to general public of date, time, and place of hearing was published on March 15, 2025. A notice to the applicant of date, time, and place of hearing was mailed on February 27, 2025, along with Chapter 4 City Code Alcoholic Beverages. Departmental reports were received as required by City Code, and recommendation is approval upon final inspection. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Councilmembers, a motion? Mr. Lanfair?
I move, I move we approve Item Request 2025-111.
And Mr. Sheard?
Thank you, I'll second.
Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Mr. Alcantar, your license has been approved. You're free to leave if you like. Public Hearing 7C, Public Hearing on Request from Hooker Brothers Sand and Gravel Inc. for a Conditional Use Permit to operate a sand and gravel operation located in the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter, 33-11-9, and the northeast quarter of the southwest quarter, 33-11-9, east of Blaine Street and north of Shimmer Road. Mr. Nabody, please tell us about this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The item before you is a Conditional Use Permit application. The property is owned TA Transitional Agriculture. Sand and gravel operations are permitted by Conditional Use Permit. That means council has the authority to put conditions on it. Over the years, city staff has worked with council, with neighbors, with a variety of people to develop conditions that work for these permits in this area. Some of you have been around as we have changed those and made those a little more stringent or a little more strict or changed those around. So in your packet is a resolution which includes all of the conditions that we would, you could put on this. You can put additional ones as well, but these are the ones that staff would recommend for operation of this kind of use at this location. You look around that area off of Shimmer, north of Shimmer, there's a lot of lakes there. There's a lot of lakes there that are sandpit lakes because there is really good sand and gravel there. And you get it by pumping it out of the ground. I've told people before, if it was oil, we'd have oil derricks out there. We don't have oil, we've got sand and gravel. And so, they're pumping it out of the ground, and that's why they're proposing to do it there. Hooker Brothers did make this application on behalf of themselves and the landowner, Mark Hanson. And staff is recommending approval of this with the conditions that are listed in the resolution.
Public hearing is now open. Steve Hanson, did you want to speak?
Hello, I'm Steve Hanson. I'm the, one of the managers of adjoining property just to the east, or, excuse me, to the west of this property. If you see on the screen the little notch up in the upper left-hand corner, that's an irrigation well. So my concern, that surfaces are 40-acre plot there. My concern is, how will that sand and gravel operation affect that well? And if it does affect it, who will pay for the relocation of it in the future? And plus, on the homestead there, there's probably four or five different wells there. How is that irrigation, or the sand and gravel operation going to affect the aquifer and affect our water for our houses and our grass and everything there? So that is our concern as an adjoining landowner.
I don't know if we, anybody on the council can address that? Is there anybody here?
I've did some research on sand and gravel operations near irrigation wells, and it can affect, because it disturbs the underground water, changes underground flows. So if it affects that irrigation well and we can irrigate that corn land, that will be an issue for us.
Thank you.
Jeff Hooker, would you like to speak?
I'll speak for, that we have not affected any of the irrigation wells. There's a lot of our properties that we have pumped over the years, and they still produce corn and everything on it. We've never had any issues with the irrigation well. The water you see, you know, on a lake is actually the underground water. It's from the aquifer. So, I mean, it's still flowing, the water table, the, whatever height of our lake, that's usually the height of the underground water. So we don't affect it by our pumping operations. We have never had any issues. We, we're pumping the one over on Gun Barrel where we're pumping now. I mean, there's houses to the south of us, there's houses to the north of us, right north of us, and there's houses, there's a, you have quite a few to the west. And nobody's ever had any problems with their waters. I don't think, the well is on his property. I mean, we will not be able to affect anything. We have to stay away from that. We can't do anything with that because we have to stay within our boundaries. And we will not pump, probably within 150 feet of that well. We'll stay at least that far away. So, I don't see an issue. We've, like I said, we've never had an issue with anybody, you know, with any wells before in our past. We've been in business 52 years, sand and gravel business. We haven't had problems. But this will be our 10th location in those 52 years. We've got 10 different, or nine different lakes that we've already pumped. And we're in process of pumping right now. And we try to do everything by the, what our Conditional Use Permit says. We stand behind that, and we have... We stand behind that, and we have no issues. So, at that, I mean, if you have any other questions, I'll be thrilled, delighted to answer them.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Council members, Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. I move that we pass twenty twenty-five dash one one two.
Mr. Lanfair?
I second.
Mr. Nickerson, discussion?
Yes, Mr. Hooker, can I have you come back up for a couple of minutes? In my twenty-two-plus years here on the council, some of the most controversial issues we've had have been sand and gravel pits. And what you see here tonight is not a roomful of people protesting. So, to me, that's a pretty positive sign. I don't know if it was Hooker Brothers that we've seen in the past, but there've been times if it was your group, you saw this chambers full of people that were in protest at times. So, things are going well. I would say that you must have a proven track record that speaks highly. So, I, that part, I think, is, is very good tonight. I don't see a lot of people, and we got one concerned member here. My question on the parcel that I saw up there, just out of curiosity, is this going to be one big lake? Are you looking at a couple of smaller lakes?
This will be one, one lake.
So, that entire area, more than likely, I mean, not perfectly rectangular, but most of that will probably be.
Most of that will be pumped, yeah, will be put in, because what our setbacks in the conditional use permit, our setbacks, we have to have two hundred and fifty feet, I believe. Thinking off the top of my head.
Two hundred and fifty.
Three hundred feet.
Three hundred feet from.
You have to leave three hundred feet at the end because they can pump to within a hundred foot of the property line on the east, west, and nor, and north. And then, on the south side, they can pump within three hundred feet, I believe, because it's up against the road, and we don't want them undercutting the road. And then, they have to leave at least three hundred foot because as they're pumping, they get the fines, the waste sand that gets, they end up moving it around on the properties and putting it back into the lake and filling that up. And that three hundred foot gives a bare minimum to put a road and a lot around a lake so that it can be developed for housing many years in the future. They may want to consider rearranging that a little bit to make that more efficient for them, but our requirements are that they leave it three hundred foot.
Okay, well, I was just curious because, as you know, in the past, there've been people who've been very opposed, and I figured a lot of the residents up there on Rainbow Road and Bass Road may have concern about flying dust, which is always a thing. People worry about the flying dust, and that'll all hopefully be controlled as best as possible.
Yeah, we have to control that.
Yes. So, anyway, it's just encouraging to see a room almost empty when you're bringing a sand and gravel request before us. And how many years does it typically take you to do everything you like to do in the area?
This property, we're looking at somewhere around maybe fifteen years. It'll take us about fifteen years to pump it out.
Right, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Hossi?
Thank you, Mayor. Chad, so, to address the concern, is there a, any condition in the, in the use, conditional use permit that would, that neighbors, if they had a problem with a well, with an irrigation well, if it did affect the aquifer to the point that it affected their irrigation well, is there any condition in here that would cause them to pause the?
There is not in this. That's not something that we have in the past had brought forward as a concern. And Nebraska water law is particularly difficult when you start trying to mix the interaction of surface water with groundwater.
Think, you know, and I, I've not ever heard that anybody had a valid map of the, of the aquifer, you know? I mean, nobody really knows exactly where the pockets are and everything. So, I think that's where the challenge is. We just don't know. I don't think we've had any significant problem or any problem that I'm aware of from sitting here, but I would like to make sure, because if there's no problem, there's no problem having the conditional, a condition in this conditional use permit that would ask them to pause if we did have an irrigation well. And I'd like to add that, I don't know what, I'm not sure what the language would be to, that if we did have or did disrupt some of the normal irrigation flows that, that they were asking about, that we would pause the conditional use permit until either, maybe never, you know, it would just be paused for the duration of the twenty years.
We are suggesting this for a ten-year period, and the resolution says a ten-year. They did ask for a twenty, but we typically do ten and bring them back to, one, to find out if there are those problems and what that looks like. If you really want to add a condition, and we can do that, what I would recommend is that you postpone the decision on this until the next meeting because I have made more mistakes writing conditions on the fly at a meeting than I want to admit. It is really best off for us to be able to take it back as staff and work on something that we can bounce back and forth and test amongst ourselves and make sure is appropriate without being, without having to come back and do this again to change it.
No, then I would move to postpone this hearing, or this, to the next meeting.
Council, there's a motion. Is there a second? Councilmember Brown seconded. Discussion? Mr. Sheard?
How long will it take for you to get that ready? Would you be ready for the next meeting?
I think we could, I am going to be out of the office, but I think we could be ready for the April eighth meeting. It shouldn't be all that, it shouldn't be all that difficult to write, but I also don't want to try to do it from the dais.
No, that's, I agree. I appreciate that. I think everybody probably appreciates it.
But I think we could do it for two weeks from now.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we're not going to be delaying.
And I'm looking at Carrie to make sure she agrees with me.
We're not talking a six-month delay. We're talking a two-week delay that hopefully that doesn't cause us much trouble, so.
I just think that it's, it's, it seems to be a no harm, no foul. If, if we've never had the problem and it's not a problem, the additional condition won't change anything. It won't harm anybody. But if there was a problem, it would actually be the solution, so.
I, we, and we probably need to look into this just to make sure that typically if somebody does something on their property that impacts somebody else's well, that's a civil issue. And I don't want to, I don't want to insert the city into the middle of a civil issue. And I'm sure Carrie doesn't want to either. So, we will come back with a recommendation that is in the best interest, hopefully, of the operator, the neighbor, and the city to, and with the reasoning behind whatever we suggest if you, if you decide to postpone this for the two weeks.
Okay, so this is on the postponement. Doug Brown, did, will you vote on it? Thank you. Motion adopted.
Public hearing seven D. Public hearing on, on acquisition of public right-of-way for South Locust Street improvements, Foner Park Road to Second Street, project number twenty twenty-one dash P dash six, Benton Enterprises LLC, Johnson and Taylor. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes, good evening. This is for several more of the right-of-way acquisitions that are required for the South Locust Street Improvement Project.
Public hearing is now opened. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Council members, is there, Mr. O'Neil?
I move that we approve twenty twenty-five dash one thirteen.
Mr. Lanfair?
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Seven E. Public hearing on acquisition of permanent easement for Independence Avenue, Capitol Avenue to Manchester Road, project number twenty twenty-three dash P dash ten, Bonahoom. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes, this is for a permanent easement that we are needing to complete the Independence Avenue roadway project.
Public hearing is now opened. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Mr. Brown?
I move we approve twenty twenty-five tack one one four.
Thank you, Mr. Still.
I second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hossi, your speaker's light, okay? I was going to say, I did, I hope I didn't overlook you. I, I just, so, Mr. Sheard, do you wish to be heard?
Thank you. So, this is the, can you bring that up? Is that possible? Are you on the?
For a permanent easement for an existing sidewalk that is currently not in the right-of-way.
So, what is the plan? I know we've talked about this, but what is the plan with the, the long-term here? Are we going to get rid of the old sidewalk and put in all-new on the curb? Are we going to get rid?
Talking about the project in general?
Just on this little part right here?
So, this parcel here, this permanent easement that we're acquiring is for the south sidewalk only because it is on their property. Technically, legally, people don't have the, the right to be on that sidewalk. So, with this project, when we found this situation, we decided that we needed to clean that up at this time. So, that is what this particular easement is for.
It's just getting this to be ours?
Yeah, it's still their land. It's just an easement for the sidewalk so people can walk on it.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Resolution eight A. Approving updated parking regulations. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes, so recently, we were contacted by the utility department. They've been having some issue with truck parking from JBS, infringing or parking along the right-of-way of Museum Drive, particularly near the substation here in the corner of Museum Drive, right across the, the road from the entrance into JBS. Truck drive on the east side of their property with, with the substation obviously there as well as currently there's a new solar farm out here in this area as well. They requested that we look at a no parking zone along Museum Drive so that they would have the ability to enforce staying out of that area as far as parking goes. We talked to PD as well because anytime we do a no parking zone, we want to make sure that there's enforcement with that, otherwise we're just wasting our time and putting up a bunch of signs for nothing. So, we talked to all the groups. Everybody was in concurrence that this could work. So, we're bringing that before you guys tonight to consider adding to our no parking ordinance.
Thank you. A motion, council members? Mr. Lanfair?
I move we approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash one one five.
And Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. I'll second.
Discussion? Mr. Hossi?
Thank you, Mayor. Keith, so, the reason people park somewhere else is usually because there's no other room for parking where they need to be. Is there sufficient parking where they need to be?
My answer to that would be this is a JBS problem, not a City of Grand Island problem. To my knowledge, they have plenty of area that they could park trucks in waiting for going into their yard. We've, we've explored or talked about over the years, the idea of potentially vacating Swift Road to them because at this point, there's really no public service to that road since we've completed the project to have access from Shady Bend to the treatment plant, as well as we still would have Museum Drive to the north for secondary access to the plant. That could be a possibility going forward to this point. I know, my knowledge of the situation is they're not ready to acquire that yet. There's benefits to the city as well. Obviously, it's a heavy-used road with a lot of truck traffic on it. Maintenance and whatnot have to be provided by the city. So, my thought is on that, that we continue to pursue that until there may be more on board with that situation.
Yeah, I mean, I've driven by schools. When school gets out and it's, it's a little bit crazy with the traffic. And Councilmember Brown and I just drove through there the other day at shift-change time, and it was, it was probably twice as bad as with schools. So, it was, it was pretty congested, you know, with a lot of people and cars and, you know, what's the process to get everybody out of a certain area at, in a decent amount of time? And so, we've actually drove through there recently. Yeah, I'm just, I'm hopeful that they find sufficient parking somewhere else, and maybe they've needed additional parking and they've just never been forced to do it. And, you know, unfortunately, we just went through this with the casino where the casino had to have additional parking, you know, in order to open. I, if that's the message we need to send to JBS, I think that's the message, so.
Again, yeah, this is a public street. Any of those stalls along there, if they were allowed, which, again, to my knowledge, this is already a no parking area on Swift Road itself, primarily because of the issues you bring up about traffic and congestion and all of those kind of things, those stalls wouldn't be counted towards their parking requirement in itself. So, again, they have a large lot over here. Oftentimes, good, bad, or ugly, trucks do queue up on this road. I don't know how often or what the, what the enforcement policy on PD, if it's a complaint basis or whatnot, how they, how they manage that either. So, I can't speak exactly to that. But again, the hope is not to have overnight truck parking in public right-of-way next to critical assets.
Okay, thank you, Keith.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
The last thing on our agenda is I ask Carrie Fisk to update us on the Nebraska Supreme Court's opinion in Woodsonia Highway two eighty-one versus American Multicinema. This was in the media, so I thought it'd be beneficial if Mrs. Fisk would tell us what the Nebraska Supreme Court decided and why.
Everybody likes to be put to sleep with a Lola Byer bedtime story, so a little law briefing should help get you ready for bed. To try to give you kind of a brief summary, as, as most of you are familiar, when Woodsonia took over Conestoga Mall and worked on the deconstruction process, that involved relocating or removing a lot of the existing mall tenants. One of those tenants that became the source of some conflict was AMC Movie Theaters. Woodsonia, it appears from the face of this case, tried to negotiate a voluntary vacation by AMC and was not successful in doing so. Throughout the course of their efforts, AMC, AMC's attorney, or Woodsonia's attorney was allowed to represent the CRA and some initial threats of condemnation of AMC's lease if AMC did not voluntarily vacate were first made in an effort to compel that vacation. Eventually, AMC transferred, or Woodsonia transferred AMC's lease to the CRA to start the condemnation process. At that point in time, before any condemnation action had been filed, Woodsonia brought what's called a forcible entry and detainer action against AMC. It's an eviction action, asking a judge to decide that AMC did not have the right to be there anymore. That matter proceeded up through trial court. Trial court granted Woodsonia's action to kick out and evict AMC. As these things often happen, AMC appealed the matter, and the Nebraska Supreme Court handled what they call as a case of first impression, first time they've decided an issue like this, and essentially had a couple of questions they had to ask. Is an eviction the right way to kick a commercial tenant out in this particular set of circumstances? Or should they be fighting about ownership? And then, they addressed a bit whether or not the CRA's threat of condemnation of part of Woodsonia's interest was appropriate. There were some arguments made by AMC that if There were some arguments made by AMC that if Woodsonia wanted to transfer their lease to the CRA, they should have transferred all of Woodsonia's issues to the CRA, which would have made them ineligible for that eviction action. After a lot of convoluted matters, this has been going since March of 2023, the Supreme Court decided that the county court here should never have given Woodsonia the right to evict AMC and has reversed that, ordering them to go back in time essentially. So legally speaking, what they did is reset the clock back to March of 2023 and have ordered AMC and Woodsonia to figure out what happens next. Practically speaking, as you are aware, that building no longer exists. We can't actually go back in time to 2023, so there are some interesting hurdles in front of them. As of right now, there's no action that the city is involved in or the city needs to handle, but it was particularly relevant given how high-profile that redevelopment was and kind of a, a good reminder that sometimes moving fast to get things done breaks things a little bit versus slow and careful, steady work. Sometimes the law changes halfway through the middle of, of something, so just some things to keep tabs on and kind of creates a bit of a legal question mark as to what will happen next since all the Supreme Court did was order that everything that had been done for the last year and a half be deleted, so.
So the AMC and Woodsonia may fight this out in a civil action, but the city of Grand Island has no exposure in this case?
Correct, yeah, there's some involvement of the CRA, but of course, as you know, the CRA is not the same as the city, so the city at this time has no, no dog in the fight, except for that which occurs in the media, I suppose. But, any questions? Anybody has? Need some light reading? It's like 20-some pages of very exciting legal reading.
But I think what you said, though, is, is important because it shows the importance of if you move too fast and cut corners, then you can end up two years later in front of the Nebraska Supreme Court and here you lose. So there's, there's some words of wisdom to being slow and deliberate and careful, especially where legal matters are involved. Thank you so much. We had a wonderful meeting with lots of public input. We have completed our agenda. We are adjourned.